Recording in progress.
Do a quick roll call, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd? Mr. Valencia?
Yes. Bahia, please.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Beravozzo?
Here.
Ms. Weewell?
Yep, here.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Mr. Stenbridge, floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we start seeing 11:30 AM discussion. The first case is BOA 1432486. Address being 46 to 48 Leo and Birmingham Parkway. This is an Article, the PDA Article 80 project. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Ruffo. An attorney in Boston at Smith, Duggan, Cornell and Gollum, 88 Broad Street in Boston. And with me on today is the developer applicant, ARX Urban, and their team Benjamin Moore, Benjamin Mall, M O L, Danny Mall, and Peter McCaulley, also our architect from Embark, Dan Artigis. Just quickly, this project proposes a small project of six stories on the corner of Lothrup Street and Leo Birmingham Parkway and the construction of 38 residences, all four rent apartments, as well as 13 at-grade parking spaces with the option of adding seven additional semi-automated, so-called stackers, to the parking area to make 20 parking spaces. The Article 80 small project review process was begun on February 8th, 2022. We had public meetings, two public meetings, one initially and then after receiving a lot of community input. We had revised the project and Mr. Benji Mall will take you through that. We had a second public meeting on that. We also had an open house in the neighborhood. We had four meetings combined with the Brighton-Auston Improvement Association and the Austin Civic Association. Finally, or in that process, we went before the B PDA Board on September 15th, 2022 and obtained their approval, the B PDA Board approval. We have filed previously 71 letters of support from community members in support of the project. The zoning relief, just quickly, are four different categories that have been tripped, if you will, by the project. One is the use, multifamily residential in this CC1 zone is conditional. The FAR for ratio limit is 1.0 and we are seeking 3.11. The height and the stories are limited to 35 feet. We're looking to build a building consistent with the other buildings in the area, 69 feet in six stories. And finally, the parking under the code, Article 51, would require 76 parking spaces. And as I mentioned, we're proposing 13 parking spaces, et cetera. Finally, through community involvement of the various neighbors, Mayor's Office of Housing, City Council, Liz Breeden's office, et cetera. We arrived at an IDP, affordable housing mix of, combined of 18.4% with five IDP units at 70% of AMI and two IDP units at 100% of AMI for a total of seven of the 38 units restricted with IDP restrictions. So with that, I would like to introduce the representative of the developer, ARX Urban, Benji Mall, who will take you through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. If you don't mind, go to page 3, please. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for having me today. We're thrilled to present this project after a two-year community and Article 80 process. You can see here, 46 Leo is at the corner of Lothrup and Leo and Birmingham Parkway and is really the last parcel in this development corridor to either be developed or receive approval. So we gave great care and thought to our massing and to our project here, thinking through the other projects that have been approved or under construction right now along Leo Birmingham Parkway. Next page, please. You can see here, the current improvements on the site are, it's a state police barracks. The state police left the site earlier this year, so leaving a vacant two-story building that's largely built out as a jail, so it would be very challenging to use the existing improvements. And you can see the 50 Leo, 50 Leo project right next door, which really served as the cornerstone and how we thought about the massing for this project and how we kind of responded to neighborhood comments and feedback based off of the project next door. So, next slide, please. So, as Mr. Ruffo mentioned, 38-unit project. The FAR, so the density of the site is slightly lower than the project 50 Leo next door that is fully built out and fully sold condominiums. And we spent a lot of time thinking through how to acknowledge that design, but also to step the project back a little bit and to acknowledge the crosswalk that is being built right here. So the indentation of our project really is, captures kind of the pedestrian activity read into corners here. And then further, we step the project down back into the residential neighborhood behind us based off of community feedback. And so if you go to the next slide. You can see overall, because this project has been going on for so long, from a community standpoint, we were actually one of the first to increase above the 13% affordability level. And so we're thrilled to be able to exceed what is required under the BIDP. The project will be sustainably constructed. We spent a lot of time thinking about widening the sidewalks and maintaining the setbacks that the other development projects along Leo Birmingham have. In addition to removing a very, very large curb cut that the state police currently utilized for the site, which will significantly improve pedestrian safety. All of our projects have a large public art installation and will be driven by a community RFP process once the project is complete. And ARX Urban is incredibly proud of being, working on our projects in a progressive transportation and thinking about mobility in a progressive way. So here, we will be subsidizing public transit passes. We'll have an electric vehicle car sharing and then we have more than one and a half biking spaces per unit above and beyond what's required under design guidelines here. Next slide, please. So Mr. Ruffo mentioned, we had an extensive community process. I think one of the things that we were particularly happy about was, right after filing our small project review, we hosted a large, open, community open house. We had over 70 folks and provide feedback based off of the project in a pretty informal way, which really helped shape how we thought about the project and really took the tone down from some of the community conversations, which we're very thankful for everybody's help. Next slide, please. And so overall, you can see the step back in the rear of the building to the residential community, which again is a little bit different from the project right next door. We added significant green space behind the building. We added an additional two green roofs for our community member, for our building tenants and committed to a full solar powered building as well. But overall, we spent a lot of time working with the community as well as with Council Breeden's office to really kind of improve, improve the project. Project started as 47 units, then was reduced to 43 and then ultimately to 38 based off of that community feedback. In that, the units were made a little bit larger as well based off of community feedback. Then we also added a dedicated pickup and drop-off zone in front of the projects. Next slide, please. So here you can see some of our design precedents really trying to create a warm English building that accentuates that sidewalk and the crosswalk and the pedestrian experience with that city area right in front of the building. Next slide, please. Here's a ground floor plan, a small lobby off of Leo Birmingham Parkway. There's also an entrance, the curb cut for parking in the buildings on Lothrup Street, or 13 parking spaces as we mentioned. One of the things that we are trying to do in all of our development projects is prioritize people over parking. And so we have the ability, if demand necessitates and if we need to, to increase the number of parking spaces through a semi-automated system. So we've designed the project such that we have the clearances to do that. But ultimately, one of the things we're trying to do is get people off the roads and try to get at folks living in our buildings who live a car-free lifestyle. And so in doing that, we'll only provide 13 park spaces upfront. In addition, you can see the street trees and the additional green space between our project, 50 Leo Birmingham, and the residential neighborhood that maintain the 20-foot set of that under the current, the current code. Next slide, please. Here's generally, a general layout of each floor. We have a mix of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, larger average unit sizes that I think are typically seen based off of community feedback and a desire here to have slightly larger units. Next slide. Again, here's the landscape plan. You can see there's this outdoor space between 50 Leo Birmingham Parkway that will be, will be lit and have movable furniture, so have an outdoor space for our community there as well as some large street trees and arboretum planted to provide a buffer between our project and the neighbors. Next slide, please. And here's a general view of some of the design precedent from the landscape. Next slide. And our project will abide by and exceed the complete street guidelines. So 15-foot sidewalk on Leo Birmingham continues that pedestrian experience that the other projects along the street have, as well as maintain 11-plus foot sidewalks on Lothrup Street, which will make that pedestrian experience significantly better. Next slide. So I believe that's all we have for you today. Mr. Ruffo already talked about the zoning summary, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I believe, is it Mr. Carter from BPDA is on? Who can walk us through the BPDA process?
Yes, thank you. We held several meetings for this project virtually through the BPDA posted in all our normal sites. This project received a fair bit of community support. As the development team touched upon, there were some concerns from the neighbor directly to the ear abutting the project and they worked with them to address them, including moving the side of that transformer and stepping the building down as it moves there to try and preserve as much of their light as possible. We expect that this project should go forward and we believe that it is a valuable project within the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, just one question about the parking and the breakdown of it and the allocation, if we would, again?
Yes, so we have, we have 13 parking spaces. You know, we're trying to abide by kind of BPDA guidelines of having 0.5 parking ratio or below. I think one of the compromises we made with the community was that if demand necessitates, meaning if everybody in the building has a car, we have the ability to add an automated parking system into our garage just based off of the design. But we're really trying to be thoughtful about how we construct and think about parking in all of our projects because we're big believers that if you build it, they will come. But otherwise, we're trying to incentivize folks to live car-free lives.
Thank you for the clarification and good luck with that.
And is that essentially stackers? Like basically you have the ability to double the capacity through stackers or?
Actually, here would be more of a puzzle, an automated puzzle system where you're able basically to, it's like an automated stacker system.
Dan Artigis with Embark, if I may. This semi-automated system and our 20 parking count does not require anyone to move another person's car to access. So it's a little bit more reserved and feasible for a multifamily project like this.
Mr. D'Amico?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, all D'Amico BTD. Should they change their mind on the number of parking spaces? I'm assuming that they have to come in front of the CBA, is that correct?
Up here? That's a question from up here.
Yeah, I am not 100% sure. Can you clarify the CBA is again? I'm sorry.
He's talking about the ZBA, us.
I'm sorry.
I think you do. You would have to come in front of the Board of Appeals to change the number of spaces.
Okay. Is there any other questions from the board?
I have, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Are you the same developer for 30 and 50?
No, that's a different developer.
Okay, so the two properties are different developers. And so this is, you're, you're the only developer for 46, correct?
That's right. The developer for 46 is the same developer you may have seen in the, in the presentation for 525 Lincoln Street, which is, is well under construction. That's, you know, further down in Alston. That's the same developer. That project was approved and it's, it's nearing completion. And Benji Mall is directing that project as well. But in terms of-
I mean, the reason, the reason I ask is because the buildings adjacent to them have very similar kind of density in relation to them, the other kind of smaller scale residential. And I was wondering if there was any kind of coordination in regards to the ground floor programming? So right now, the residential building at 46 is, the residential kind of asset would be just a fitness, a fitness facility. And given that this is kind of a zone under commercial, I just wanted to understand this project in relationship to the recent buildings in its adjacent. And I guess that, and I guess that's also BPDA's kind of review and purview. Like you can't just build housing in its most kind of insular. You have to look at what are the dynamics of community? How does that then begin to affect the parks? So these are just more comments. And so I have a couple of more questions. So if you can just answer that one, that would be good.
Yeah, so, so I think, I think that's a great question. I think we, we utilized that team at Embark and Dan Artigis, who is the architect of the 50 Leo Birmingham Parkway project next door. So, Dan, if you don't mind, why don't you, you provide a little bit more context?
But that's a different developer, right? Dan was the architect for 46 and 50, but is different development teams?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Different developer, different development teams. I think we wanted some continuity from the design aspect and really an understanding of exactly what is done. So Dan spent quite a bit of time working with the BPDA design team, thinking through this. And, and Dan, if you, if you wouldn't mind, would you provide a little bit more context on that front?
Yes, of course. You know, having the ability to work on, on both these projects pretty, pretty quickly after each other allowed us to have an input on this entire corridor and see the progression of how the Parkway is being redesigned to provide pedestrian and bike access, as well as the ongoing discussion on whether or not smaller scale commercial spaces are appropriate for this stretch of Leo Birmingham. And that was a conversation that we had with both the community and the BPDA. Based on our conversations, I feel that commercial space in this project or these projects along Leo Birmingham, outside of the anchoring commercial retail spaces as you go towards New Balance and then towards the Raceway and the Western Ave corridor, was, was something that was considered. I believe, you know, as we developed both of these projects in tandem, it was really looking towards the corner of Western Ave and Western Ave itself as the basis for commercial development on this stretch. And it was looked at historically along Leo Birmingham, how smaller scale commercial spaces weren't really viable. So we were, we were kind of tasked with providing amenities for the building itself, but not commercial spaces, which might not be viable for this stretch.
Okay. And then in regards to, let's say, contributions in regards to community benefits, was there, I think, if I recall, you had a contribution to the Little League? Am I, is that correct, to the Little League?
So, so there is, there's a few contributions. One is $38,000 to the Parks. $10,000 to Blue Bikes program. We have roughly a $50,000 contribution. We have to provide a 25% design plan in tandem with the BPDA, BTD and DCR in terms of rethinking and designing the Lothrup and Leo Birmingham intersection. So that was really the cornerstone of our mitigation plan, working with them to think through how to further the transportation improvements of this corridor. $10,000 to also Brighton CDC as well, who we've worked with on other projects. And then here, again, trying to be really progressive, setting the tone from an alternative transit standpoint, providing a shared electric vehicle, subsidizing basically that public use of public transportation and then having significantly above required bike parking per unit. So that's our, that was our general mitigation package.
Okay, great, thank you. Because I think there's an opportunity here and I'm glad the BPDA is here to also speak on behalf of your project. To, you know, now we have a lot of residents coming in and there's an opportunity to really use the open spaces right across your property behind you and make improvements for your residents. Because you noted that you had adequate open, open space at the rear, but I would say your, your, your asset is really the open public spaces outside of your building. And so I'm really glad to hear that that's, that part, that your contribution is, is contributing to that improvement, that infrastructure improvement and green space. I don't have any further questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair. To a proponent, the project has seven IDP units. Five are for 70% AMI and two are for 100% AMI. So if you can talk to us about what are the reasons why the project is not providing some of those IDP units for lower income families in the 30, 40, 50 or 60% AMIs?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a really great question. And ARX Urban has a track record of, we're building affordable housing across the city. We build both affordable, capital A affordable, and then market rate housing. And so we are really kind of thinking a lot about feasibility. I think to change our affordability requirement here would require significant subsidy. And we're developing this project on behalf of the landowner who's owned the land here for almost 10 years and wants to develop a market rate project and not an affordable housing project. So it was a significant, we ended up that IDP myths based on significant feedback from the BPDA as well as from Council Breeden's office.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Here none, can I have public testimony?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, Austin Brighton, the A.S.O.N. We'd like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time, but I can say that the applicant met with our two local civic associations, being the Austin Civic Association and the Brighton-Auston Improvement Association. The Austin Civic Association sent a letter to the board earlier today expressing no clear consensus and therefore they defer to the judgment of the board. They did mention that those in the ACA that were in opposition cited concerns regarding density and scale, the use of Boston-based contractors, lack of off-street parking and green space and local traffic flow and public safety. As for the Brighton-Auston Improvement Association, I believe their zoning chair, Annabella Gomez, is in attendance today to testify as to their stance. With that said, again, we'll defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you very much.
Great. Is Ms. Gomez on, Jessica?
Yes, sorry, go ahead. Annabella, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, the BIA voted to not support this project. We have many concerns with this project. The only good thing from this project is the seven IDP units, but we feel strongly that for seven units, we're giving up too much density. It is located in a green overlay district, but there is no green space on the project. The green space you see in the back, if you look closely, you'll see it's artificial turf, which I believe that the Mayor's Office is very much against. It's not green space. The trees are not on the property. The meetings were held in July, the public meetings. The other meeting that they had was held at a bar. If you look at the photos, most of the people are holding alcoholic beverages and it was a very comfortable for everybody to support, but not really listening to the direct neighbors who had major concerns, especially the house abutting it with the height of the building and the fact that this property is using every inch for density. So we voted against this project and we hope the board votes against it as well. Thank you.
And any other requests, Alice?
Yep, a minor, go ahead. You all said? Okay, I'll go to Anthony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony Disidoro, representing the Austin Civic Association. The Office of Neighborhood Services did a good job of summarizing the letter that we sent earlier. We were split right down the middle in terms of voting. And as Frank mentioned to the board, those in opposition, he did a good job of citing the concerns off of our letter. I would also just throw in one other, so therefore we're going to defer judgment to the board. Just want to throw in another general issue and I'm sure this is something the board hears throughout the city and an ongoing concern. And we'd like to think that the city has some influence over the process, but not a lot. But obviously, the concern is as we continue with these transit-oriented projects, and as was mentioned earlier, this is a strip of Birmingham Parkway going into Western Ave when there is considerable projects in the pipeline being constructed. being constructed, being planned, that are transit-oriented in nature. And obviously, an ongoing community concern is that the state is going to adjust service levels to all these new people that will be coming in. Because obviously, yes, we do want them to walk if necessary, take bikes or take public transportation. But just to throw that out, that there's continuing concern about the state's ability, given all that we've heard in the last few months, of being able to align service levels to all this new development that's going in with very low parking ratios.
Thank you. Paul, and then Thomas?
Paul? Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Paul Adams. I own the house right abutting this proposed project. Thank you for hearing me. This project's gonna, like, I can see the sunset right from my door now. I won't be able to see it, it's only going to be 13 feet in between the condo building and this new building. There's going to be a huge shadow that's going to take all the sun away from my house on this. It's just, you know, people on Lothrop Street, they park from radius. There's no parking whatsoever, 13 spaces for 76. I understand what Benji's saying, he wants people not to use cars. People are going to use cars. There's, where they have the artificial turf, from what I'm understanding, they might actually use that for two parking spaces, which would put the exhaust fumes right into my house, into my backyard. I'm not sure if that's the truth or not, but that's what I'm understanding. Also, right off Lothrop, they're going to be taking the right into the garage. Are they going to have that lit all night? I mean, the light going to come right into my house? That's, you know, horrible, the whole thing is horrible to me. The other one is 30 is approved, this is going to be approved. This is blocking my house in. We've been here for 45 years, three generations of family. I just, you know, want, it's going to completely mess our way of life up here. They're putting a transformer in the ground, I understand that. From what I understand, the transformer makes a buzz and a hum sound. Plus the safety, is it going to blow up under there? I don't, I don't know what that's about. Also, the 71 letters of support. We looked at all the support letters. They're from Roxbury, they're from Quincy, just like Annabelle said, it was at the bar, and it was just a piece of paper and the people signed while they were drinking. The people that put those comments far are not even from the neighborhood.
Tom, Thomas, and then Sal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thomas Leonard, I live at 50 Aldi Street in Austin. I oppose the 46 Leo project. Two purposes for opposition. I do not believe that the green space proposed by the developer is significant enough to offer a carbon offset for the building being placed here. I'm concerned about a heat island effect, and I think that the green space needs to be increased specifically with trees before the project can be approved. Second point, this is the same developer for 525 Lincoln Street. And with 525 Lincoln Street, only 12% of the contractors working on that project are Boston-based. I did ask during the Austin Civic Association meeting if the contractor for 46 Leo would be committed to hiring Boston-based union contractors, and the developer was unwilling to make that commitment. I believe until the green space is addressed and the labor commitment is addressed, this project should not move forward. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Sal?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I live at 48 Waverly Street, which is just down the street from here. And I'm opposed to the project the way it is. The project just maxes it out. I mean, the 13 feet between buildings is because of the other building being stepped back from the property line. The space in back is actually pavers that the weeds can grow through. And the parking garage is open to the rear, facing that little house with the family in it. So cars, yes, can park out there, but also the garage vents out there because it's open to the back. To me, I'm not against development. I think, you know, redeveloping that property is fine, but the way it is, is just maxing it out. One of the board members asked about the A M I, the I D P units, because this makes money this way. You know, the other renters just pay a little bit more, and they give a little break to some units, but it's not for working class, poor people. And as far as the parking, that's great if everybody would bike and take the tea to work. But we've seen and lived with the radius, which is right next to this. 50 Leo has been open now for months, maybe half a year. And we see that there's not one parking spot since it's opened on the street, on Leo Birmingham Parkway. So that doesn't fly. And one last thing, please. Somebody spoke to the letters of support. If the board looked at the 72 or 78 letters of support, I looked at all the addresses, other than two people that were at the Notch Brewery that lived close by. You couldn't be further away from this project, so I don't buy any of that.
Thank you, we understand that point, thank you. Any other raised hands, Jessica?
Additional raised hands?
No additional raised hands. Can the applicant address these concerns, the green space setbacks, you know, the light, the humming noises, et cetera? Can you, can you just address that?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And also, local participation percentage of M V E, more charter vendors?
So I think, we'll talk about that first. On our other projects that they're referring to, we are in compliance with the Boston Residents Jobs Policy. In fact, we're significantly exceeding currently the people of color participation. And we are, we have been commended by the Boston Residents Jobs Policy Oversight Committee for how we're doing on that project. So I'm happy to share further detail with the board, but I think from our standpoint, we are certainly above board on that front. I think from a green space standpoint and from listening to the abutters, we spent quite a bit of time, we reduced the massing of the project from 47 to 38 units. We worked with Council Reddington's office and with other folks in the community to add two additional green spaces to both our building for outdoor space behind the building, as well as we removed parking between our project and Mr. Adams' house. I'm not sure why or where the reference to turf is coming from, but the intent is that we maintain a 20-foot setback underneath the current zoning code between our building and the abutters. And that would be wholly landscaped with green space, as well as the additional green space that we added between our building and 50 Leo Birmingham. These were all moves that were made during the community process based on this feedback. And I guess one final point as well is the contribution, $38,000 to Parks. But we recognize that a large portion of our green space outside of what we have on site is, that will be utilized is in the abutting park. And so that contribution will help, to Hansi's point earlier, to improve that park.
So just for clarification, there are no artificial turf? It's just because it's on your slide 12, but there's no official turf on your project?
We're happy, we're happy to remove that or update the proviso. I also think there's no current green space on the site right now. If you look on one of the last few slides, it is currently a heat desert, right? And so adding green roofs and green outdoor spaces to our projects, we acknowledge exactly what we're saying. I think the key for us is we're in a housing crisis, and we're trying to balance the need for new housing and as well as kind of all of the community feedback here. And so we did the best we could from a massing standpoint and reducing the massing, adding as much green spaces would allow for a feasible project here.
Thank you. Other questions from the board before we vote? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with the P D A recommendation listed on the memorandum that includes seven I D P affordable rental units and community benefits.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we continue with the rest of the 11:30 case, excuse me, ask if there are any withdrawals or deferrals requested from the 1 P M hearing? Hearing none, then we will go back to 11:30. That was previously noted, 58 Murdoch Street is being withdrawn, which takes us to case B O eight, 139, 5905. The address being Forhain Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Thank you, Mr. Stunbridge, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano, with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the applicants, Tom Walsh and Peter Ryan. I also have Adam Glassman, the architect, here as well. What you're looking at in this rendering is a proposal to combine, which is the left-hand building, combine two existing empty parcels at four and six Hains. That would create one new lot and would be known as Forhains. We're proposing to erect four residential condominium units with three ground-level parking spaces. You can just see on this slide as well, you can go to the next slide, Madam Ambassador. The building to the right of it, the smaller building, is our building, my client's building as well. That's eight and 10 Hains. Everything as you go down on this side of the street is four-story, across the street as well, and in the rear of us. Just to go over the layouts, in the first floor, we have our garage, we have our parking, and we have our, if you could stand this slide for a moment. We have our bike storage area, trash area, and a lift to go up to the second level. On the second floor houses units one and two. As we scaled the project down a bit and made modifications with the community, those units are now studio units. That's 543 square foot studio and 543-foot studio with a deck. As we go up to the unit three on the third floor and unit four, those are bi-level units on the third and fourth floor. Those are the larger units at three-bedroom, 1,212 square feet. If you go to the next slide, please. Just so the board has some context, you can see the blue highlighted area is the lot at the empty parcel now. You can see sort of the mix of housing stock in that area. We're primarily up and down that block and along Webster Street are four-story or larger apartment-style complex buildings. If you go to the next slide, please. And you can just see that's the empty parcel as it stands now, just a front view. Next slide, please. We just get into the plans, just to point out, we worked extensively with the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association, as well as our abutters, to come up with the exterior design that they wanted to see, which is that brick exterior and the top material. We also, we do have three interior spaces, those are full spaces. We also made commitments that we would agree to, the parking restriction program with B T D available. We will also look for alternative areas for additional parking on the lots and then the commitments to maintain that exterior design that neighbors wanted to see. Just to go over the variances required, we have a use variance. It is a 3 F district, we're proposing four units, but that is common up and down that block. Our minimum lot size at 1,800 square feet would be undersized. We require a variance for lot size. F A O, we're at 2.3. Our building height, we really did try to keep the height down as low as we can. We're at 40 feet at three and a half stories. And then we did have our side yard violation. We're at one foot, two and a half would be required. And our rear yard, we are still maintaining eight feet, but 10 would be required. And then for parking, we do have three spaces, because we wanted to make four would be required. We wanted to make those spaces really functional to come in and have access in an hour and to make sure there was enough on. I can pause now and answer any questions. Oh, just to point out, sorry, on the top floor, there are two exclusive roof decks by hatch. Those are 13 by 14, those are exclusively to the third and unit number three. Thank you.
Are there questions from the board?
I would like to hear B P D A's recommendation or feedback on this project.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, B P D A. We recommended that we just hold the three-story structure at the end of the street and increase setback on that side property line. So understanding how most of the street is not for storage, we're still trying to keep it at three stories of both the same production. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, Mayor's Office would defer to the judgment of this board, some background information on the community process. O N S hosted an abutters meeting on October 27, 2022. We had four abutters join the call. The main concern from abutters that were mentioned was parking and density. Abutters did mention how the developer's team had been very responsive and easy to work with, though. The applicant met with the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association multiple times over this course of the community process. The association voted to support the proposal with 23 residents in favor and 17 in opposition. In their support letter, they stated the developer has accommodated many of the direct abutters requests. With that, we'll defer to the board, thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian Parr?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Parr with Council Clerk's office. And based on Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association's vote, the council would like to go in support of this project, thank you.
Minor? I see Mr. D'Amico's hand up.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Bob D'Amico, B T D. Jeff, where, what street is the curb cut on? Maybe I missed it.
So it's right on Hains Street, Bob. If you pull up the rendering, there's an existing curb cut now, we're just shifting it. But if we, I don't know if we have a copy inside, there's a front garage that opens, it would be enclosed with everything in the interior, so it's about 12 feet across.
Because the plans that I saw showed an 18-foot curb cut, that's kind of large.
Yeah, no, it's 12, and that could be the existing curb cut that's there now.
Okay, and then my final comment is, you're right at the edge of Hains. And you know that Hains is a one-way. So if they're coming out of the garage and they make a left turn, that's kind of dicey, because if there should ever be a conflict of any kind, the person coming out of the garage is 100% wrong. So they're going to have to take a left turn out of the garage to comply with the, with the law.
So we purposely pushed the garage on the other side, on that right side of the building. So they would be able to make that radius turn.
Can you have a sign that says left turn only?
100%.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I keep Bob? Steve and then Teresa?
Hello?
Hi, go ahead, can you state your name and address for the record and tell us if you're in support or opposition briefly?
Yes, sure, Steve Holt, 68 D Marginal Street. I am an abutter to this project. I'm speaking in support of this project. Between October 2022 and April of this year, we met with the developers multiple times through both the processes with the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association, general meetings, the planning and zoning, zoning subcommittee meetings, and also individually and throughout, like on email and over the phone. And they were very accommodating and made significant changes based on our feedback, especially around parking accommodations, the exterior. the exterior kind of look and feel aesthetic of the property. And they also worked with us to create a construction management plan that will, I think, allay many of the concerns that butters had around the construction and ongoing maintenance of the property. So I support this project and have enjoyed working with these developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa?
Hi, I'm Teresa Drum. I live on Cottage Street, Aiden Cottage. And just to resonate the same, I worked with the developers and they've listened to neighbors regarding the design, which I'm extremely happy about. And as far as the parking, my understanding is there's three parking spots. And it is really close to the water taxi and tea stop, which is generally what that tech building is going to bring into East Day. So I'm totally in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian and then David.
Afternoon, madam chair, members of the board. I'm Brian Langson, 9 Hain Street, I'm a butter. Just repeating what was just said by the two previous people, this applicant, Tom and Peter and even Jeff have been tremendous to work with. They also dealt 10 Hains. They're just great neighbors. They were soliciting feedback during construction of that project as well. It's right across the street from us. And they've been a pleasure to work with. I just also want to reiterate that the work they did to sort of redesign and listen to neighbors' feedback has been tremendous. It's going to add so much more aesthetically to the street. And my wife and I are in full support of this project. Thank you.
David, go ahead.
Hi, my name's David Lang. I live at 65 Gove Street. And I also own a few other properties in the immediate vicinity of three blocks away. And I want to speak in enthusiastic support of the project. I think it's the right scale. I think it improves the neighborhood. I think it's beautiful and I'm going to do a lot to improve our little nook. Thank you.
Jessica, how many more raised hands are there?
Those were the last two.
Minor, okay, are you outside?
Thank you, madam ambassador. My office represents the government of Virginia, we're on a goal and grateful support.
That's the last of the raised hands. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I do have a quick question. Are you the same developer of seven Hains Street? Because it has brick building and standing seam.
I believe that's a different developer. They develop next door.
Yeah, they're next to you, so it looks like materially, it looks like materially you're working with that.
Correct, yeah.
Or are you, so my only observation is that the fourth floor massing at the rear feels like an additional story. And maybe that's what you were getting in terms of BPDA feedback, in terms of trying to maintain the three-story. I agree that there's a lot of, there are buildings out there that works with the proposed massing. Are you, would you be open to working with BPDA on the fourth floor kind of massing at the rear? That would potentially mean either losing square footage on your bedroom units or reducing it by one? Not the units, bedroom on the fourth floor.
We actually were, so as we went through this process, making changes, we actually had to bring down to the two studios below. So we were hoping to make up some square footage. And the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association really has been asking for more family-sized units.
Right, but in terms of massing, in terms of the character of the neighborhood, the three-bedroom units on a full floor to the front works, but the ones to the rear, you go up in terms of it feeling like a story. So it would need to adjust the rear. I'm just making some observations.
Yeah, I mean, we'd be happy to work with BPDA on suggestions if that's, you know,
Okay.
to cut where we could, with the three bedrooms if possible.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso to have BTD review on the parking and BPDA reviews, paying special attention to the fourth floor rear massing so that it works within the context and character of the neighborhood.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Take a second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bedebrazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have three companion cases. First being case BOA 129-0225, with the address being 92 Waldemar Ave Avenue. The second being case BOA 129-0226, the address being 96 Waldemar Ave. And the third companion case is BOA 129-0229, with the address of 104 Waldemar Ave. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Thank you, Ms. Stembridge. Thank you, madam chair, members of the board, attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of Brittany Crespo and the Crespo Group, the developer and owner, and Eric Zacherson with Context Design. Just to quickly reiterate the proposal, they're three separate lots. And we're proposing to raise the existing dated structures on them to erect three separate three-family buildings. If we go to the next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. This just shows the existing conditions of the building. Extensive renovations would be needed on all of these lots. Structures, you can also see, they don't even imply with the existing code or what's allowed under the existing, so they're very, very small. You can see the sizes, the curb cut, it's all of that on top on front, and the middle one at 96. And then they also have curb cuts on the other two proposed buildings as well. So if we go to the next slide, please. This particular area, although zoned 1F, you can go to the next slide, I'm sorry, has a mix of housing stock. Right here is part of the proposed development of the 10,000 units from Suffolk Downs. That's directly across the street from us. If you go to the next slide, please. This is apartment complex directly diagonal from us as well, the same street across the street. That's a 20 to 30-unit apartment complex with parking. If we could go to the next slide, please. And these are just some other projects, 75 Waldemar, which is a 16-unit at the corner. That's the 16 Waldemar at the corner. And then the one on Wally Street. These are all multifamily residential buildings all along that corridor. If we go to the next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. This shows the proposal now, if we could stay on this slide. These are the three buildings, and we really wanted to make these to fit and blend in with the community context. And although, we'll show you another slide, but right now, if we could stay on this, there's a one-family to our right. The building that's blue next to 92 is an existing three-family building. My client went through an extensive community process trying to work with the group, the Orient Heights Civic, to try to make changes and modify this project. When we started and how it was originally advertised, we're three five-unit buildings. And there wasn't affordable component to that. My client is, wants to promote affordability. So even though we reduced this project, we still are keeping one affordable unit voluntary at 92 on the first round level. The other buildings, we tried to blend in. As I had mentioned, there's also nine parking spaces. There'd be two separate curb cuts on the front of the property that would lead to the back and house three three-spaces that would go at each building. We also significantly reduced the height massing of the building. So we took off an entire floor. So these are now three-story buildings, which is, we've removed the height variance required. In this particular area, although some of the other buildings that we showed in the original picture were small, the building to the left of us would actually blend right in, so we'd be at the same height. We're actually below the 35-foot requirement, right? Now, we would be proposing 33 feet in height for each building. All of the units are very similar. These are all two-bedroom units at 1,000 square feet, 1,230 square feet. And 1,230 square feet. They have small front decks. We removed all roof decks on the project as well, because we know that was a concern for neighbors. We've really tried to reduce the variances that are needed. We do have, because of the use variance, because there are three families required, our FAR is at 1.26, which has been reduced, but still requires relief. Side yard varies from 5'6" and 7" to 3'6", so we would need variances for that. And then parking, we're at one-for-one, but 1.5 would be required. As I mentioned, this would still allow us to have one affordable unit on 92 that would go with this project as well. I can, I went over the layouts of the units and sizes. I can pause now to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Mr. Drago, can I ask if there were any changes to this from the last time you presented? And it was deferred?
So I didn't present, madam chair, I deferred. I think it was the board's size, we got hit a couple of times. We did make changes all along, you know, we deferred a few times on this project. But then the board was a short board a couple of times as well.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, let's get public testimony first.
Yes, madam chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board, some background information on the community process. ONS hosted two butters' meetings for this project on March 29th of 2022 and May 26th of 2022. This project reduced its size from the original proposal throughout the community process to three buildings with three units each and one voluntary affordable unit. Butters were in opposition to this proposal. As they stated during both meetings, if the project, they feel is too dense for this street, then it goes against the character of the neighborhood, which mostly consists of single families. They also voiced concerns regarding the lack of parking in the area. A direct butter also expressed concerns over the height, density, and excavation during the construction, voicing some worries that it may impact retaining wall. The project presented to the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council in March, April, and July of 2022, the association voted to oppose the project with 25 residents against and two in favor. The civic expressed concerns about the potential loss of single-family homes in the area. Our office received 12 letters in opposition, four from Waldemar Ave, one from the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council, three from Faywood Ave, one from Woodswood Street, two from Monta Morenci Ave, and one from Orient Ave. With that information, we'll defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, madam chair, members of the board. Sebastian Par for Councilor Coletti's office. Based on Orient High Neighborhood Council's opposition and strong community opposition, the council would like to oppose this project as well. Thank you.
Minor.
Thank you, madam ambassador. Thank you, madam chair, members of the board. My office for the Carpenter City, we like to vote in our support of this project.
Thanks, okay.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty, echoing the sentiments of Council Coletti's office, as well as the overwhelming opposition from Orient Heights Neighborhood Council to go record opposition.
We have seven raised hands. Can I just ask, once we start to unmute people, if you can briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition? That way, we try to get to as many people. I'll start with Sean and then go to Diane. State your name and address and briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition.
Sean Calista, 8 Marmarenty Avenue, right down the road from this development. I strongly oppose it. The Neighborhood Association obviously voted drastically to not support this. I want to keep single-family homes in our neighborhood, and I hope you guys can do so. I also just like to make a comment that I have a friend that owns on 31 Monmouth, where this developer had a proposal, built the building. And they're actively dealing with construction issues, you know, after buying the units. So I do worry about the craftsmanship of what the Crespos do to their development. So please.
Thank you. Okay, Sean Cronin, can you give us new information? Briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition?
Sure, just to be clear, my name is Sean Cronin. I'm at 108 Waldemar Ave, which is a direct butter and immediate butter to this project. I would like to speak out in opposition to this project and highlight that these, my property and the property next door were built at the same time. They're nearly identical in terms of their layout. And at the time they were built, they're built in with hill. There's a retaining wall that is shared by both properties. It's partially failed a couple, way before we bought the property. And my understanding is that part of this project is to destroy their half of the retaining wall, which would undoubtedly compromise my retaining wall and potentially have that hill slide into the back of our property. The community's been clear, we've been clear throughout this process, that this project is too large. It wants to build too close and too high in a predominantly 1F neighborhood. And as such, the board should.
Okay, Diane?
Hi. Yeah, good afternoon. And I'll try to talk quick, but I'm Italian. I'm in 24 Waldemar Ave, I'm three doors down from this, I'm a butter. And to the left of me is the Trinity. They just built 371 low-income housing directly across from Suffolk Downs. We had thousands of meetings at Suffolk Downs with the 10,000 condos, and they agreed, this is very important, they agreed that they would put one-family homes to stay in with this current zoning and to stay in the style of the neighborhood across the street from us. So, okay, so they honored our request, which is wonderful. But anyway, density, green space, I mean, these are built right on the sidewalk. They're ginormous. I'm a taxpayer, I feel like it's all about greed. And I'm sorry, I strongly oppose. I know you've got a million other people to speak, but it's too big. Thank you.
Nicoletta? Okay, go to Brooke.
My name is Brooke Machado. I'm a butter. I live at 103 Faywood Ave. I am here to speak in opposition of this project. These buildings will occupy nearly the entire parcel of land on which they'll be built. They're going to eradicate all of the open space, which serves as a buffer between the dwellings in our 1F zone. They're excessive in height, they're way too close to abutting the direct butters' property lines. They do not fit the fabric of our neighborhood. We want the board to oppose it, to protect 1F family.
Thank you. Okay, DI. Hi, DI, is it DI or D? You're unmuted.
Hi, good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead. Could you briefly tell us, give us new information if you're in support or opposition?
I oppose it. My name is Diane Engemi. I live at 91 Waldemar Ave, which is right across the street, a few doors up. I definitely oppose this project. It's too large, there's not enough parking spaces, there's not enough air to breathe. It's just, if they put these three families, three three-families, it's overburdening the community. We're as known for one-family homes, so I definitely, I hope the board will strongly oppose this project.
Okay, madam chair, I have eight, seven raised hands. Do you want me to keep going? Four raised hands, and we have probably eight more cases, so maybe you can do two more. Okay, I'll go to Mike and then. And ONS, if there's anyone you feel we need to call on, please let us know, because we can't see them.
Hi, my name's Michael Stutgens with an address of 244 Leyden Street. I'm calling in favor of this project. I think it's appropriate in size and scale relative to the neighborhood, particularly with the Suffolk Downs project right across the street. It'll deliver much-needed housing, and nice to see that the developer's offering an affordable unit here.
What is your address, Mr. Stutgens?
244 Leyden.
Okay. Then, oh, that was David, right? Mike?
Yes, hi. This is David Lang. I own a small business with my brother, and he's Boston on Breedman Street. My wife and I will be living at 65 Gove Street. And the closest property that we do own is on Swift Terrace in the neighborhood next door. I am speaking in support of the project. I think that across the street, while there are some single-story properties that the developers have chosen, and the Suffolk Downs development also includes stories that are, you know, near 100, and that three stories is actually very modest considering where this property is situated. I think the developer offering an affordable unit when they uh, when they didn't have to is, is nice. I think that the, uh, the difference in design between the three properties is fantastic. And I do want to speak in that the Crespos are, um, born and raised in East Boston and have many high-quality buildings, um, that I am aware of. So while somebody may have had an experience that they didn't like, um, I think that they're stand-up people and good builders.
Thank you. How do you, are we all set? Do you want me?
I think there's still a couple of hands raised. Sorry, uh, Madam Chair, I know.
There's been some hands. I don't know if we can get to all of them, but
Sure, I, I know there's a couple of Butters. I guess David Gratus and John Casamasima.
Well, let's make those the last two, because I know we have, uh, good flavor and we also have a lot to go.
Certainly.
Okay, go ahead. Um, I am muted, David. Go ahead, David.
Hello, David Gratus. Thirty-six Leyden Street, in strong support of this project. We need housing. I love the volunteered affordable housing unit, and the Crespos build good properties. I've seen a lot of them. Strong support.
Thank you. John?
Great, uh, John Casamasima, two-thirty-six Orient Ave. I'm a member of the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council Board and also on, uh, the advisory group for planning East Boston. And I wanted to oppose this project as it's currently zoned for a single family. And even under the most generous proposal uh, that is going through the process for planning East Boston, this building would still not be allowed. It would only be allowed to be a two-family. And it, uh, also would be required to have a larger setback. So I ask you to oppose the project. And I also point out that those that are speaking out in favor are not residents of the neighborhood. They are developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to ask the proponent, if you can tell us what is the AMI for the, for the housing unit that you are proposing?
So we, we had proposed seventy percent, uh, Mr. Valencia. That's where we were at, but we, we were open to suggestion. We didn't even get that far. Um, if I may also, I'm sorry, I hope that answered your question. I apologize.
Yes, thank you.
I was hoping to address, Madam Chair, if I may quickly, a couple of the comments, because they had to do with, um, the building size of scope.
Uh, quickly, please, yes.
I just want to point out that we are over the rear required setback of thirty-five feet. We're at thirty-nine feet, six inches. Our height is at thirty-three feet. So we're below even what would be allowed under the code. And I, I do know there are one families around there, but there are as many, um, multi-families around there. To the very left of us is a three-unit building. Behind us is two, and diagonal is a multifamily residential rental building over sixteen units. So we're not setting a precedent, Brett. We're trying to fit in with, with some of the newer three-unit buildings that are popping up in this entire area and to create some housing. Thank you.
And can you remind us, are these condos or rentals?
Condos.
Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, did you read the BPDA recommendation?
I did not. Is Mr. Hampton available to do so?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hampton. Uh, our recommendation was based on five unit with five spaces each. Uh, so once this is a new project zone, there would be present to offer any sort of recommendations to the board on this, if we're able to say anything, we can do.
I really only understood part of that, which was that your recommendation was based on five, five units per building. So I don't know if Hanson, you caught the rest of that?
No.
I'm looking at my stuffs working today.
Yeah, your internet's bad.
If you can, if you can repeat after we
So my recommendation was based on five, five and five.
But what, knowing what you know now?
Uh, it is, we haven't seen any. And we, we saw five and five, that's all.
So they only get that first bite at the apple, I think, is what he's saying?
Yes.
So he does not have an updated recommendation for us?
No, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, given the amount of opposition and letters that we received, I'm putting a motion of denial without prejudice.
It's not good.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd? I don't know if I heard a yes or no. Uh, Mr. Valencia?
No. I was
You are a yes, thank you, I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
No.
Mr. Langham?
No.
The chair votes yes, but the motion does not carry. Right, is that right? I think I counted correctly?
Ye- yes, yes, you're right. Um, the board can make another motion if they wish. If not, it would be a straight denial at this point.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion based on the number of units that the proponent already reduced from fifteen to nine and the addition of one affordable housing unit. I would like to make a, a motion to approve with BPDA design, design review.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
No.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Given that the East Boston upzoning goes up to two units, raising it from single-family to two units, I see these three proposals still being excessive at three units each, so I'm going to vote no.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham? Sorry, Mr. Langham?
No.
Okay, the chair votes no, so this motion does not carry.
Again, if no, no other motion, it would be a straight denial, uh, at this point.
Okay, up to the board, do we have another motion?
I make a motion to stric, to deny this project.
I second.
Okay, uh, Mr. Stenbridge?
No.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
No.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
No.
Mr. Langham?
No.
I'm so confused by our vote right now. Um, the, the chair votes yes, but I think the motion still does not carry. Is that right, Javier?
It does not carry, that's correct.
Okay, well, then I think there's, that's it. That's
At this point, it's a hung board member, so it'll be denied.
Oh, okay. Let's keep going.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
We shall move off with that. We shall move on.
I think there was a question whether it was straight denial or whether it was denial without prejudice, Javier. Can you just clarify?
I want to make a motion.
Yeah, at this point, it would be denied with prejudice. If there's another motion, it would be denied without prejudice. But right now, it would be with prejudice.
Okay, so I'll make a motion of denial without prejudice.
I'll second.
Oh, all right, I realized we're still voting. Okay, uh, let's get back to Stenbridge. Mr. Stenbridge?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Okay, the vo, the chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, on to one o'clock.
Oh, 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 okay, okay. Um, first is the one o'clock here in timeframe. Case BOA one-four-six-six-nine-three-eight. The address being one-two-three Lyford Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, I am, Mr. Stenbridge.
Okay, Mr. Small.
Right ahead.
Yes, sir, please go ahead.
So, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, I have a business address of fifty-one Dobson Road. Today, we're here seeking relief to wreck the two-family dwelling on a vacant lot. Uh, the zoning sub-district here is a three-F five-thousand. Our lot size is three-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. Um, the violations, zoning violations are, um, FAR. The requirement is zero-point-eight. We are proposing one-point-two. Usable open space, um, four-hundred per unit. We have, um, or eight-hundred for, for the project. We have five-oh-six. Front yard insufficient, requirement is fifteen feet. We are proposing ten. Rear yard insufficient, the requirement is thirty feet. We are proposing twelve. Madam Chair, um, the unit sizes are nineteen-hundred square feet and can stuff three bedrooms and two-and-a-half baths. Um, just a little bit about the property itself. This has been a vacant lot for well over thirty years. And it's been a blight in the community. And, uh, again, it's a three-family zoning district, and we are seeking to put a two-family dwelling on the vacant lot. I'll stop there and entertain any questions that, uh, board members may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have, I, excuse me, I have one question. I'd like to know if any, is any of these zones going to be for low-income people?
They're not. They're going to be condominiums. Their homeownership opportunities, market rate.
Any other question, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, calling anyone with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, Mayor's Office would defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, the applicant met with the GMNC, the Greater Madison Neighborhood Council, uh, which sent a recommendation in. The proponent go back to the Woodrow Ave. Neighborhood Association and address traffic visibility issues as described in the refusal letter. Um, there is a dispute where the applicant says that they met with the WANA twice and want to proceed, uh, and go before this board, whereas the WANA asserts that they only met once with the civic association. So it seems that there's, uh, recognizable differences, uh, between the two parties. Um, that's the information that I have at this time.
Thank you.
The board.
Madam Chair, we're in a still, I can respond to that.
Let's, uh, finish with the public comments first.
No problem.
Ayo, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ayame Delewee from the Office of City Council, Brian Morell. In regards to one of the three Lyford Street, the applicant met with, uh, WANA. Um, again, it's contested whether it be once or twice, and GMNC once for sure. Um, initially, WANA had asked for curb cuts for the parking space in the driveway on the side, um, in order to preserve or, I guess, maximize the green space, and which GMNC also agreed with. Um, but to both, um, organizations' records, no updated designs were submitted to their, to them. And at this time, there are two letters of support on record. Um, I'm sorry, yes, two letters of support from, um, Butters and one letter of opposition from GMNC Civic Association. With that being said, the council would like to defer for further community engagement and also with the recommendation of a BPDA design review. Thank you.
No additional raised hands. Thank you. Mr. Small?
Yes, Madam Chair. So we've had four meetings with regard to this project. We had a, um, a Butters' meeting sponsored by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We met with the Greater Madison Neighborhood Council, and we met with the Woodrow Ave. Neighborhood Association, which is WANA twice. We were at their March meeting, and me and the owner attended the May meeting. So we met with WANA twice, just for the record.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA design review paying special attention to the exterior to work within the character of the neighborhood.
May I have a second?
Second.
Stenbridge? Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
Did I miss your yes or no vote, Mr. Stenbridge? Uh, my apologies.
Uh, there was a yes vote.
Thank you. Uh, the chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
Next, we have case BOA one-four-four-three-nine-six-nine. The address being four-oh-four West Second Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Baranski. I'm attorney with the business address of three-fifty West, uh, Baldwin, South Boston. I represent Victoria Bano's, the owner of unit three of the four-oh-four West Second Street condominium, which is a three-unit condominium. Uh, my client, uh, owns the top floor unit, and she's seeking approval today of a private roof deck, which would be pertinent to her unit only. Size of the deck, as can be seen on the plans, that's the site plan being viewed now, will be approximately one-hundred-ninety square feet. It would be accessed by means of a new spiral stairway, which would be added to my client's existing rear balcony. Uh, so there would be neither a headhouse nor a hatch providing access. It would come off an existing rear porch. Two violations are cited on the zoning refusal letter, roof structural restriction under section sixty-eight-twenty-nine of the code, and insufficient rear yard setback. Section sixty-eight-twenty-nine makes access to a roof deck by means of a stairway headhouse, a zoning violation requiring a conditional use permit, whereas access by means of a dimensionally compliant hatch would be zoning compliant. Uh, the intent, uh, I would suggest is to discourage the construction of rooftop headhouse the construction of rooftop headhouse to access the deck, and that is not what is being proposed here. Access here, by contrast, would be by means of that spiral stairway leading from that existing third-floor porch level below, which is, I would argue, a means of access even less intrusive than a roof deck. Second violation cited is for insufficient rear yard setback. In this district, the minimum rear setback is 20 feet. With the application of the shallow lot exception, the actual rear yard setback distance here is 15 feet. As can be seen on the site plan, which was shown earlier, the building's existing rear porch structure is located itself within the rear setback as a pre-existing condition, which means that simply the vertical rise of the proposed stairway, which provides access within the existing area of the rear porch, causes this cited violation. The proposed roof deck itself is outside of the 15-foot rear setback area except for a very small five-foot wide connection to the proposed spiral stairway providing access. I would therefore posit that the violations here are very minimal. And again, this is a roof deck being proposed for the exclusive use of my client who owns the third-floor unit. With that, I'll pause and take any questions.
Thank you. Just to confirm, she already has that rear deck, is that correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair. The existing porch, again, this is the best view in terms of understanding the proposal. That existing porch is, of course, in effect, existing. Instead of coming up through a roof hatch, which would have essentially made this a zoning compliant project, my client is proposing to come off of the existing rear spiral. The reason for this, the rationale, is that directly beneath the proposed roof deck is the bedroom. So having a drop-down hatch stairway dropping down into a bedroom where there's a closet, where there's obviously a bed and furniture, would be a bit impractical. My client's feeling was that since the spiral stairway would extend within the area of the existing rear porch and provide access to the roof deck, which I say is actually compliant in terms of dimensional setback itself, but would be a better alternative than using a hatch to provide access. Hatches can sometimes be unsafe. And this stairway, as I said, is actually a less intrusive means of accessing.
What, are you aware of other existing roof decks in this immediate vicinity?
There are numerous roof decks. This is not far from my office. Obviously, it's, you know, located on West Second Street in South Boston, where there are a number of similar roof decks.
Are there questions from the board?
Do we have BPDA recommendation?
We do not. I was told they did not receive any paperwork on this.
Okay. And I guess the, one of the questions for the architect is, did they explore going up the roof deck from within existing staircase that would lead all the way to the top?
I can say that we did, in fact, look at that. Basically, the spiral staircase, even at a five-foot tight diameter, ends up kind of eliminating one of the rooms of the top floor. And so, since there already was a deck existing in the rear of the property and a staircase connected, connects that deck all the way to the ground, it seemed appropriate to continue the existing exterior stair up rather than take out a room of the interior or greatly reduce the size of one of the rooms of the interior on the top floor.
I don't have any further questions.
Other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna Wade with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted a Butters meeting for 404 West Second, Unit 3, on April 26, 2023. Around a half dozen Butters attended the meeting. Three stated that they opposed the project mainly due to fear of future noise, and one Butter vocalized their support. Additionally, we have received 15 letters in support and five in opposition, including one from the St. Vincent's Neighborhood Association. The Neighborhood Association is opposed to the addition of any roof decks that are afterthoughts of absentee landlords or homeowners who wish to have outside space that does not conform to the neighborhood and its residents. At this time, though, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Kelly Aaron from Council of West Ransville's office. The councilor would like to go and report in a bosom-sheltered ring club.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council of Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Due to the violations of Article 60 at the council, we would like an opposition.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion to defer to allow BPDA to review the most updated plans and provide a recommendation to the board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bedaberaza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, it's hot here. The next deferral date would be July 25.
Does that work for the applicant? Mr. Maranci?
That works. Yeah, that works. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Next, we have case BOA 1445801, the address being 35 to 39 Saratoga Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Mike Chavez, architect representing the owner, who's also here, Ms. Margaret Kramer and Mr. Spencer Royd. My address is 26 Evans Hill Park, personal address in Dorchester. The project being proposed here is kind of a two-piece thing. One of them is an extended living area in the what's considered basement level of this building, as well as a roof deck on the property in their, within the condo. If you go upside, just actually to the front cover sheet there again. The building that you see there, they own that left-hand wing of that building. So that's their unit there. So they have the exclusive air rights to the roof above, or the roof rights there. And they also then have, which is currently a storage area, they use it as a gym, et cetera, on the kind of basement level of the larger building that you see there on the right-hand side. There was an initial mistake when it came to the single variance that we were asking for, which is the FAR. When we submitted the drawings, we were under the impression that the, I was at least, that the storage area is actually not livable space, but that it actually is considered livable space according to the assessor's office, and that they're also paying taxes on it. So once we actually put that together, the FAR is actually not being violated at this point, and we are essentially here because of the roof deck with the iPod bulls there in East Boston. So that was the reason we're here today. So with that said, then, the extended living area, the owners are having their first child, who's just a couple of months, and so they are looking to utilize their space they're paying taxes on to convert it into a couple of bedrooms, living area for family to come and visit and stay with them while they're, you know, starting their family and growing their family. And so this space that's being converted in the basement has 10-foot ceilings, the large windows have 40-inch sills, so it's not your typical basement level that go all the way up to the top of the ceiling. The, there's an existing unit already in the basement at that level abutting them, and they also have a guest area, a guest room at the basement level in their current unit. So the space really just behaves more like a garden-level or first-floor level space there. It is connected to their existing unit on that same level, so on the left-hand side, you're seeing that kind of small wing that you see there, this is Unit 2, that is connected into the larger extended living area that they're proposing for this space. And again, there, that space that you see on the right-hand side is what is already being paid for with, as livable space and listed in the assessor's office. So that's that kind of one portion of it, and then we can talk about the roof deck, and I can then leave it open for any questions from there. And the roof deck itself, they have an existing stair on the side of their unit that already goes up to the roof. And so they're just going to be utilizing that existing stair, which I believe is the next slide down. And, yeah, so that's their existing current unit. You can keep going down. And then there's their proposed roof deck up at the top there. So there's an existing stair already there, and then we'd just be converting that existing roof into a roof deck that would be privately used by the owner. There is an adjacent unit up at that level. They would allow that person to be able to utilize the deck if they needed to, to access that stair to get down to the first level if they needed to. So they'll leave that as available for another means of egress if they needed that. But the roof deck itself would be there for the homeowners.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I guess if you could just clarify, in the basement under Unit 2 for the bedroom, are those egress windows, you said, that the sill is?
Right.
444? Okay, so they can get out through the windows, and then they can get out through the internal stair and also through the common hall, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, then no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. ONS hosted in a Butters meeting for this proposal on April 13 of this year. One Butter attended the meeting and had some questions regarding the roof deck. The applicant presented to the Eagle Hills Civic Association and the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association on multiple occasions. Both associations supported the project, and no concerns were expressed. With that information, we'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Parr?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Sebastian Parr from Councilor Colletti's office. Based on the community support, we would like to go and support this project as well. Thank you.
Okay, Saava?
Yeah, my name is Saava Krantz, and I live on the 35 Saratoga Street, and we support this project.
Thank you. I have no additional raised hands. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review and that no building code relief be granted.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bedaberaza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good afternoon.
The next three cases are companion cases. The first being case BOA 1466722, with the address of 14 Orient Avenue. Next is case BOA 1466726, also with the address of 40 Orient Avenue. And the third is case BOA 1466729, with the address being 36 Orient Avenue. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, Goldline Realty. I believe we also have Ms. Waldo Lemus, who is the project architect. This is probably a good place to start, Madam Chair, just to walk through what this project involves, because I know we do have three separate docket numbers. So beginning here, looking at our site plan, this is currently a 15,000-square-foot lot located in a 2F-7,000 district. It has a pre-existing two-family dwelling located to the right side of the lot. Our proposal would create a subdivision of the lot and create one lot measuring, I believe we have a different site plan. If you could scroll down a bit. I know, this is not the, I don't think this is the presentation I provided to the board, so I just want to make sure we're looking at the correct one. Yeah, this is the one to start. Yeah, if we can just go back up to that first slide there. No, next slide, I'm sorry. There we go, perfect. So the lot to the left would be a lot containing about 7,176 square feet, and the remaining lot, a little over 7,800 square feet. Those are both conforming in the 2F-7,000 district as 7,000 square feet is the minimum amount required. We intended to create the proposed two-family on the new lot entirely by right, or as close to by right as possible for the 2F-7,000 district. Each of the units would be a little over 1,100 square feet, roughly 1,100 square feet, two-bed, two-bath. We are proposing a total of four parking spaces to the rear of the existing structure, and there'd be two additional parking spaces located behind the existing structure. Again, I had uploaded or sent to the board a set of the most covered drawings to walk through the additional. Yeah, we can use this, Madam Chair. There was just a slight adjustment in the actual subdivision, as you can see here. Yes, 7176 and 7824, and others labeled 7,500. So as you can see here, the landscaping that's being proposed behind the existing two-family structure for two parking spaces and then the four spaces to the rear, they would all be accessed by a common easement. With respect to the relief, I'll start with the proposed structure. As I mentioned, this does comply with the 2F-7,000 zoning regulations for minimum lot size. We do only require, I believe it's the rear yard setback, which is actually at 45 feet to the building. We do have a set of stairs that look like they encroach a bit into the rear yard setback. But we are capable of moving the building, if we did that through design review, to address that if that were a specific concern. Other than that, it's only ancillary parking because everything else dimensionally complies. The district allows for a 35-foot height limit restory building, which our building contemplates. As you can see, as I mentioned earlier, the four parking spaces located to the rear would be ancillary and located on a separate lot for the subdivision for the proposed two-family. With respect to the existing two-family, which is located on the right side of the lot, there is already non-conforming condition on the right side at 4.7 feet for the side yard. That condition doesn't change because we're not making any changes to the existing structure. However, because we do subdivide the lot, that bump-out portion of the building on the left side of the existing structure is within five feet of the proposed new property line, we're actually required to have a 10-foot setback. We feel that we can meet the spared intent of the code because that driveway is about at least 12 feet wide. We have about a 17-foot setback between any proposed structure that could exist in the new lot, which clearly meets with the requirements of Article 53. If we could zoom in, I think you can see the proposed rendering, which is up in the top portion of the screen. And I apologize, I'm not sure what happened to our package that we'd sent over, but the rendering illustrates that, you know, we wouldn't be setting back the building a good distance. There are some mature trees on the site that we would be able to preserve. And as we went through the community process, there were sort of mixed feelings on whether we'd keep the trees or incorporate new ones. We're open to either concept or idea. We do have a substantial amount of landscaping in and around the site that we are proposing behind the existing structure. Other than that, with about 1,500 square feet minimum of open space in each lot, 1,500 per unit, I should say, we're well above the open space requirements. Lastly, I would point out that we are fully cognizant and aware of the ongoing planning happening in the Orient Heights neighborhood, including preservation of one- and two-family zoning. We feel that this project meets with the anticipated intent of New Southern for that district. And it's, I believe, one of the reasons why we were fortunate enough to receive the support of the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council, and I believe the BPDA has also recommended approval. I will pause at this moment, Madam Chair, if there's any specific question to the members. And I know we do have floor plans that should be available in one of these three agenda items, but in case of any specific questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, I want to go to public testimony.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. ONS hosted a Butters meeting for this project on January 5 of 2023. We had seven Butters join the call. Butters asked developer to have good landscaping to help do screening and buffering for where the parking would be set up on the property. One resident did comment that the height was excessive, but overall, Butters were content to have a two-family go on the site. The applicant then went on to present with the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council in February and April of this year. The council was pleased with the proposal of a two-family home, and they voted to support the project with 31 residents in favor and 10 in opposition. With that information, we'll defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
One question here. How many parking spaces were we talking about?
Through the chair, there are a total of four parking spaces being proposed ancillary to the site for the proposed new structure, so two per unit. And then there are two parking spaces for the existing structure, which is located on the remaining lot. That is a currently two-family.
Sebastian?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Parr for Councilor Colletti's office. Based on community support and from the support of Orient Heights Neighborhood Council, we would like to go also for this project as well. Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review.
Second. Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bedaberaza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Next, we have 1pm interpretation, that being case BOA 1432589, with the address being 336 R. Bond Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, Mr. Secretary, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pulgeni, on behalf of the applicant, Tony Ferrara, who was on this call together with the engineer Dick Morris. This is zoning sub-district where we're located is Single Family 9,000. This lot size is 17,982 square feet. The proposal is to build one single-family home. All parties, this is ISD as well as, you know, the developer, agree that our front yard setback is 149 feet. And this is due to application ERT 1104783. The issue and dispute is inspectional services department cited the project for the following violation. Article 55, Section 41, conformity with existing building alignment. And that was in a refusal, a refusal letter dated 11023. Violation comments proposed building does not comply with the existing Bond Street modal alignment. For ease of reference, I have, did you guys receive a, I prepared a memorandum for the board. Was that distributed to you? That was submitted through, okay, good.
Yes.
I had attached a copy of the dimensional regulations applicable to this one-family sub-district in Jamaica Plain, Table E, Article 55. The issuing dispute is the manner of calculating the front yard depth. Note, the table category itself in Table E is labeled "front yard minimum depth feet", and the table requirement is 25 feet. However, there's a footnote four, which directs a reviewer to Section 55, Article 55, Section 41-1, conformity with existing building alignment, which states, and this is the whole crux of this argument, if at any time in the same block is a lot required by this article to have a minimum front yard, there exists two or more buildings fronting on the same side of the street as such lot, instead of the minimum front yard depth specified in this article, the minimum front yard depth shall be in conformity with the existing building alignment of the block. There's no dispute, there are two more buildings on Pond Street, and the undisputed calculated modal of those buildings is 27 feet. So, the zoning code is 25, but the modal comes up at 27. Therefore, according to the clear and unambiguous language of this section, the minimum front yard depth is 27 feet in conformity with the existing building alignment, as opposed to the 25 feet listed in the table. The modal can be a number higher or lower than the table requirement, depending upon the built environment. In either scenario, it merely becomes the new minimum front yard depth. Throughout the zoning code, there are maximum and minimum dimensional requirements. We have maximum building height, maximum floor-to-air ratio, minimum side yard, minimum rear yard, and minimum front yard, to name a few. ISD's interpretation essentially penalizes an applicant for providing more than the minimum front yard. The applicant's proposed lot size is almost twice the minimum requirement, and yet ISD is not citing for excessive lot size. This is because ISD recognizes the word "minimum" in that section of the code, but for some reason does not here. There is simply no support for an arbitrary application of the rules. In every section of the code, it holds true that unless stated otherwise, you can exceed the minimum, but you cannot exceed the maximum. This applies to the modal as well, which simply sets the new minimum in the front yard depth. Because it's such an obvious thing, there's really no case law that really is on point. I did provide a case that you'll see, Candace Raro Dorenzo, Mass Lampard case, in which the judge upheld the Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals case. In his opinion, as setback requirements had come into question in relation to the standing of the plaintiff, the judge stated the proposed new home's side yard setbacks complied with the Mashpee zoning bylaws because the proposed setback distance of the new house is greater than 15 feet as required under the bylaw. So, that's really the argument. I don't know if somebody is here to speak on behalf of ISD. This was initially denied. ISD Deputy of Planning and Zoning, who's a zoning attorney, reviewed it. He removed the violation. That attorney left ISD, and when he left, this violation was put back on this project. So, this has been going on for, I think, almost two years and eight months that we've been going through this. So, I'm here to answer any questions or to get your thoughts on what you feel with respect to 5541-1, which is what the crux of the argument that we're here for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions from the board?
We have someone from ISD. Ison?
Not sure if we have anyone that can speak to that process. Javier, are you aware or can you speak to this?
As to the Plains Examiner, I believe he's on vacation right now. We did notify ISD, but it doesn't seem like anyone's here right now to represent.
Okay. Question, Ms. Beda Barazza?
Okay, so just for clarity, this is about interpretation, regardless whichever way it is interpreted. It's just a matter of whether you would get a variance on that. Is that correct?
That is correct. Whether or not...
It's not prohibiting you from building your proposal. It's just whether it's recorded or not on the decision letter as a variance as needed.
So, yeah, so it's establishing that we would not need a variance. This is an as-of-right project, which was what ISD stated initially and then went back.
And the process is taking almost longer to resolve interpretation?
Well, very good point. So, we went back and forth with the Plans Examiner, I did, for, you know, eight months, and we had narrowed it down to this one violation. At that point, I sent an email to the Plans Examiner and his supervisor, and he got involved, and this was during COVID, so that took several months for that to happen. Then that came back and everything was good, and we were preparing our construction drawings to file at ISD. And it wasn't until that plan, the supervisor had left ISD, that all of a sudden this came back on, so that's why we're here before the judge.
So, we just listen to like the cases and we make a recommendation individually. And so, Javier, if we were to get an opinion from the city laws department, what is a turnaround to hear the opinion before we can then make a motion?
So, if the board makes a motion to refer to the city law, the city law department, depending if they would give it back within the next week, it could be scheduled the second hearing for a vote to the next available hearing.
Okay, and we would have that in front of us. So, if that's the case, I would like to, can we make motions yet, Madam Chair? I'm sorry, I didn't want to jump in front of you.
Javier, is that okay? Okay, ma'am.
If there's no other questions, I believe...
Correct, okay.
Are there any other questions from the board?
I'd like to ask one question. I think I understand this, but just to clarify. So, where the minimum required is 27 feet due to the existing modal building provision, but you're saying your front yard depth is 149 feet because of the access from the right of way?
That's correct. So, there's no dispute from ISD that we are 149 feet off of the front yard. So, the only violation is the front yard setback, and everybody agrees that we're 149 feet back and that the modal's 27 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Beda Barazza, do you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to refer the matter to the city's law department for an advisory opinion on a zoning code advised the interpretation of the violations are correct.
I want a second.
Okay. Mr. Stemberich?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Beda Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
So, Javier, is there, can we get a date so at least the applicant knows that we're going to review this right away once we get that advice?
Right now, I can't say because we have to notify the law department, and depending on when they give us back their advisory opinion would be that. So, I can't specify a date right now when it would be available.
I have in the past, Ms. Beda Barazza. I have participated in like appeals like this that have gone on to the law department, and it usually runs about six to eight weeks to get a decision from them.
Okay, well, that's been in two years, so thank you.
Two years and eight months.
That's another six weeks.
We'll see you in six to eight weeks, then, Mr. Stemberich.
All right, enjoy your day. I know it was a long one. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you.